Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
................................................
So, good morning, everyone. Happy Halloween. I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. The meeting documents are available for review down at the end next to Commissioner Karski. And Craig is here. If you need a listening device, you can contact him right over here. So, that takes us to routine business. First item is a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to move item number 10 to be included in item B and then to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Second item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from October 24th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Bills to be paid in the amount of $1,8,666.88.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Second with a comment.
Okay. Commissioner Karski?
As we go through the bills and you start to realize or maybe an awareness of all the different things that the county takes care of, I notice that we had roughly 40 line items for rental assistance at $15,700 for residents of our community, and about 150 separate line items for caring for people with mental health problems that cost total bills of $69,305.66. There's about 150 separate items anywhere from $20 to $2,800. So, all the things that maybe a lot of people just aren't aware that Minnehaha County gets to take care of.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just comment that we had one expert witness that cost $19,000 that we hired in a criminal case, and we had a outside attorney that was paid $22,000 plus for another criminal case. Expensive. Thank you.
Auditor Litz, did you have a comment as well?
I understood that there was a question about a payment on the bills. It was out of our capital projects, and it was for a payment of the land across the street, the second parcel, and that closes tomorrow. And the check was in the amount of $330,704.3. However, we also discovered there are some prepaid taxes in the amount of $5,160.95. That is reflected as a credit. And so, the actual amount of the check that is going to be written will be $5,000 less, $325,543.8 at the closing. So, I understood there was a question about that.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Do we have to amend the bills because?
No. No, this is just the way the accounting turns out.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Barth?
Another comment. You know, we have had a number of weeks where the bills were over a million dollars, and usually it's because of a highway project or because of money that the Treasury Department has collected on motor vehicles that's being remitted to the state. This time, we had, well, along with what the auditor brought up, our own bills.
That is true. Any further discussion? I would also note that you can tell a lot about the county's business if you spend some time with the bills and see all the different areas that our money goes to. And I know this week particularly, there were a lot of bills that I had to follow up with and learn more about. So, anyway, thank you. Thank you for the work that your office does on processing all these bills every week for us. So, we've got a motion in a second to approve the bills as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is reports. There are none. That takes us to personnel action. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Carrie?
Good morning. Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. It's time for our annual discussion about insurance premiums for the upcoming year. In this time of year, we usually talk about two. For dental insurance, let's start there. It's fairly straightforward. You can go to the claim page. All right. This is a look back over our historical claim costs for dental insurance. As we were going into the year, a couple of plan design changes, we knew we should be anticipating a slight increase. We expanded our orthodontic benefit, and we increased the age for our dependents. So, not out of line, we've had about a 10% claim increase. For next year, looking forward, no plan design changes. We will have a slight administrative fee increase. The good news here is the revenue that we're taking in is going to cover our anticipated expenses for next year. So, we're not recommending an increase for dental at all. Any questions on the dental side? All right. Let's go to health. The next page that Trish is going to go by there that just shows you the revenue. For the health plan costs, here too, you have the same years look back, and you see the different components of our health insurance. Just as a reminder, we're self-insured. So, we determine what we're going to charge for premiums, what kind of plan design we're going to have. We look at ensuring that we have enough in reserve to cover anticipated expenses and runout periods, and we broker for our own stop-loss insurance, which takes care of high claim dollars. If you're looking at the chart, what you might notice different from last year is for the upcoming year, I'm actually projecting a range. And the reason I'm doing that is because we have had a bit of an anomaly this year. We're having a high claim cost year. We're running about 25% higher than we have in past years. Now, if you look back at the health claim column, though, you'll see that we've been fairly flat and even gone down. So, it happens. I'd say it's cyclical. It's not uncommon that you have a bad claim year. Unfortunately, that's what we're looking at. Moving forward to 2018, we don't anticipate we're going to have another year like this one. We expect claims to come back down. But I'm trying to be careful when we're projecting forward so we're being good stewards of the taxpayers' money and our employees' premiums and yours as well. The other things I'd like to point out about that, admin fees. We've been very lucky with our partnerships. We're looking at about a 3% increase in different areas for that. Stop-loss, I'm projecting about $100,000 range there because I do anticipate that's going to go up fairly significantly for next year. Prescription admin fees, right in that same 0 to 3% area depending which part of prescription admin. The prescription costs overall, another sort of area that we've been keeping our eye on for the past few years, we're projecting about an 18% increase for 2017. So, for 2018, this is one area we are recommending some plan design changes. We're going to implement a mail order program to incentivize staff to go ahead and utilize that since costs are lower on mail order. And we're going to implement some vigilant drug lists. So, we're going to be watching more carefully what drugs are covered in the plan and at what point in time. Overall, again, if you look in that projection range, I'm giving about a 4.3 to 5 million estimate. I really don't anticipate it's going to hit 5 million. I think our claims are going to come back down. I think if we shoot for that 4.7 to 4.8 range, it's probably more realistic and yet careful. So, what does that mean looking forward? Because of the changes that we've had in enrollment, and this can fluctuate greatly, but if you go down to the next one, yeah, you'll see that we're taking in about $4.8 million in revenue right now. So, I want to keep close to that, but I'll tell you that just based on our enrollment changes for the past few months, you can see that fluctuate between 4.6 to up to where it is right now. So, looking carefully at it, I think we need to have an overall increase, but it doesn't need to be too significant. However, one thing that we've looked at in the past year is really what are we charging for our coverage levels by tier? And it's our opinion that we haven't been charging enough in ratio to a single premium for the E-plus-one in the family. Because we're taking in close to the amount that I think we need to, it's a good time to correct that. So, what I'd be recommending is a slight change in our rate alignment so that we charge a little bit more for the E-plus-one and for family in comparison to our single. We could do that by leaving the single premium steady and just increasing E-plus-one in family, but the result is we'll be taking in too much revenue. So, what I'm recommending is actually a reduction in the single premium for next year, and about a 4.7% increase for E-plus-one, and about a 5.9% increase for family. Now, as a percentage, that's higher than you probably heard in the past few years, but it's not out of line with market at all. And just to put that in perspective, a 6% increase on family is less than $14 per pay period. It's a good way to correct something that we should have, should be looking at as far as the premium alignment without having anybody really face too significant of an increase for 2018. And again, while that might seem high, we've been very lucky in the past five years. Actually, the past three years, we haven't had an increase at all. Since 2012, we've only had a 4% increase on the health insurance side. So, different news than I've given you the last few years, but really not bad news overall.
Are there any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Karski?
Two things, I guess. The mail order and the prescription, is there an incentive to the employees for doing that? I mean, an awareness is great, but is there, how are we incenting that?
There has been incentive for the past few years. There's a lower cost to the plan, and that lower cost is shared with the employee. However, there's going to be a disincentive for next year. In other words, if you don't take advantage of that cost savings and do the mail order, you'll be allowed to fill your script retail for, I guess, two or three times, three times. But after that, you're going to pay about 40% higher if you choose to do it at retail.
Okay. Sometimes a disincentive is just as good as an incentive. So, I'm glad we're doing something to control that cost. Other comment, I guess, is on the, you know, the change where the single, the E-one, and the family plan, and, you know, making it right, I guess. I don't think any one group should be subsidizing the cost for another. And if that's where the cost and the premiums need to be, that's where they need to be, and we need to make it right. So, thanks for doing that.
You bet. And overall, we've looked at other government entities. It's right in line. It is something that I should say that we want to continue to watch over the next year. So, we may look at that more in depth to make sure that we are, and continue to make that part of our annual process.
Okay. If I could, just one more.
Okay.
You and I had the discussion, you know, on an actuary taking a look at the plan. Can you talk a little bit about where you are with that?
Sure. What we're hoping to do is maybe take apart a couple of different areas of the plan next year. You know that we've been looking at life insurance rates over the past year. We've used a broker for that. We're looking at some different ancillary products as well, and being, looking at offering hopefully premiums that are slightly lower. We're implementing vision insurance next year. We've had it, but we're going to change carriers because the cost is slightly lower and the coverage a little bit better. The broker that we've had join that for us has been very helpful. They helped us look at this rate alignment as sort of a overall issue. We can have them go ahead and do a more specific review this upcoming year and pull apart all the medical claims. So, our hope is really to look at having them start that sometime next year. So, by the time I'm doing premium recommendations for 2019, we'll have even more information.
Okay. And you guys have done a great job, and I know with, you know, out that skillset of an actuary, I guess, and, you know, you look at it yearly, but the actuary kind of takes a longer-term look at it. So, I appreciate the work you've done, and you've done a great job with what you've done so far, but having that outside look sometimes that...
It'll be nice to have that down to the nitty-gritty, pulling apart the medical claims just to make sure. And we want to do that, just like we want to look at other areas of our plan periodically to make sure that we're handling it appropriately.
Commissioner Barth?
I just think we don't necessarily give your department enough credit for everything that you do. And, you know, the wellness things that you've brought forward, you know, that's another way to keep down our insurance rates is if we, as a group, become more healthy. And I just have to commend you for that effort, which is, you know, parallel to what we have to charge for these insurance coverages. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And on that side of it, we're implementing a new wellness portal this year. We've had a health committee that's been together for the, no, maybe three years, four years, helping us with coming up with innovative ideas for wellness challenges. So, a lot of our things go out to that group as well, and then, of course, the employees who are participating in those plans and activities.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the 2018 health and dental premium insurance review.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that takes us to item six, application for abatement. There are none. Item seven, excuses and requests. First item is the first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing on November 14th, 2017 to consider an ordinance enacting the 2017 Minnehaha County Revised Animal Control Ordinance and for the repeal of the 2002 Minnehaha County Animal Control Ordinance and any other resolutions, rules, or regulations in conflict.
I'd make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish that notice.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item B, which has been combined with item 10. Auditor Litz?
Good morning, Commission. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And today, I'm requesting two actions, and one of them would be to set the sale date for the bonds, and then the other one pursuant to that would be the publishing the sale notice. Now, at October 10th, at the commission meeting, we presented quite a bit of information about our bond. And also, I wanted to point out today that if you have any questions about, that our financial advisors could answer, Ray Woodson and Tom Grimmon from Doherty Company are here today to do just that. So, and I apologize about the kerfluffle about having to move that item there. I think there was some confusion between the commission office and what I put out as to the order, as to the way things should be. But we have to do the, set the sale date first and then authorize publication second. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Madam Chairman? Heiburger? I would just make a motion to set the date as December 5th, 2017, as the sale date for a Series 2017A bond sales, and then authorize the auditor to publish notice of the sale for the Series 2017A bond for the jail expansion.
Thank you.
A second.
Motion in a second. Commissioner Barth?
You know, this mild-mannered motion and discussion just now is really not even the tip of the iceberg because this is a gigantic step for our county to take here. And I hope those watching and those that hear about this understand that it's a commitment that we don't take lightly, not lightly at all. But it's what we need to do in the best interests of our county. And I thank you, my fellow commissioners, for moving forward on it.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I would say too, I think we've been working on this for about seven years to come to this point, to make this motion just right. It doesn't sound like anything with this one little motion, but it really is a lot of time and a lot of effort by a lot of people to put this together and to make sure that we all were comfortable that we're doing the right thing. So...
All right. Commissioner Barth?
I would also commend Bob and his associates, Mr. Grimmon and Mr. Woodson.
All right. Thank you. So, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission.
Okay. Item eight, planning and zoning notices. There are none. 10 was moved. So, it takes us to item 11. Consider a motion to accept the highest...
Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry. I forgot.
Amen.
That, I do that every time.
I'm going to zip it so I'm not saying anything.
So, first, petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Opportunity for public comment. Now, if there's anyone here that would like to speak, didn't mean to deprive you of this opportunity. It does not appear there's anybody charging to the podium. So, that takes us to item 11, to consider a motion to accept the highest bid and approve resolution for the 2017 sale of tax deed. Auditor Litz?
Good morning, Commission. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. Again, on September 30th, the county held its annual tax deed sale. We sold four properties with two parcels, RDID 76376 and RDID 63906, being paid for on that day. That left two properties qualified for the 30-day extension on paying the full amount, and both of those properties have come in. And so, tax deed number 2574, RDID 11897, for $13,181, and tax deed number 2601, RDID 52766, for $97,000, have both been paid. Action today is, requested today is to acknowledge that the two properties have been paid in full and approve the resolutions of sale.
Any questions for Auditor Litz?
Make a motion to approve the final resolutions of sale.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission.
So, that takes us to item 12, to issue a proclamation recognizing November is Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month. Stacy Teasen.
Good morning. I'm Stacy Teasen. I'm the coordinator for the homeless advisory board, and I'm excited to be here today, not probably because we're talking about hunger and homelessness, but because we're going to spend a whole month trying to bring awareness to this issue in our community. So, do I just read my proclamation? Is that... Okay, thank you. Whereas every night in Minnehaha County, there are homeless children, women, and men in need of shelter and supportive services. They become homeless because of domestic violence, poverty, untreated mental health issues, medical issues, relationship strain, serving in active combat, a combination of these factors, and much, much more. Whereas homeless families and individuals lack a permanent, safe nighttime residence, they live in shelters, transitional living facilities, vehicles, outdoors, in places not meant for human habitation, with strangers they have just met, or they are at imminent risk of being displaced from where they are. Whereas hundreds of individuals in Minnehaha County have been identified as homeless, including more than 1,290 unduplicated individuals who have utilized the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House and the 319 unduplicated guests of the St. Francis House so far this year. Whereas the number of children with homeless families in Minnehaha County has grown steadily over the years and includes more than 220 unduplicated families identified by the school district so far this year. Whereas the complicated nature of poverty and addiction continues to create personal struggles for families, resulting in more than 188 children being assigned to CASA so far this year because of repeated abuse and neglect. Whereas preventing and ending homelessness and hunger is essential to the stability of families, the growth and vitality of businesses, and Minnehaha County as a whole. Whereas there are many organizations and faith-based entities, including Minnehaha County through its Department of Human Services, that is committed to sheltering and providing supportive services as well as meals, food supplies to the homeless, and they are striving diligently to prevent and end homelessness and hunger by working collaboratively while striving to avoid those duplications of services.
Thank you. Did you want to talk about at all some of the events that you have coming up?
I do. I would.
And then we can do the motion.
So, we have an entire calendar of events to try and help people know where to go and when to be there. So, I brought copies of that if you would like to see that. But we're actually kicking it off here this morning. So, it's actually not till tomorrow, but because it fits so perfectly, you guys are the first in line for me to be able to come here. So, the proclamation is the first thing. Tomorrow, we will do a press release and have a kickoff. But the thing that I'm excited to try for the very first time is this Pick Six Challenge, trying to engage the community a little bit more in some of the things that we have going on in the community. This is a sassy little bookmark, and on the back are all the things that we thought of as a team, 14 different things where you can... Some of them are super easy. Go donate some underwear to like Safe Home or Alliance or one of the programs in the community. Comes up all the time. People don't think about it because we don't talk about unmentionables. But basics, socks, underwear, hats, gloves, that sort of thing, all the way to something a little more time-consuming like our landlord engagement panel. On November 15th, we will be having several landlords come talk to us about issues and solutions that they see working with our people who are struggling with staying stably housed. So, I'm really excited that we've got landlords on board that were really willing to come forward and talk. And we picked landlords that we knew in the community that have been maybe a little more accommodating and not so quick to evict. And so, we would love to hear their perspective. So, I welcome everyone that's on the 15th at 11:45 in the classroom at the Sulline Health and Human Services Building. But then, just the basics, read a book, something like Evicted, watch a documentary, even an easy one like the Over the Bridge documentary that was made last year about Bishop Dudley. Do the SNAP challenge or the food stamp challenge, roughly living on $4 a day for food. It's a big challenge for our families, and we know that a single person with some, the average benefit is $122 for a single person to be receiving food stamps. So, you think about that. If that's for an entire month, you're living on $122 for food. Asking people to try and ride the bus, or maybe even use a bike, because in November, we still have families and people who are using bikes as a transportation method to get to and from work. Oftentimes, I think things get stigmatized, and we hear over and over again about the stereotypes. Our chronic homeless always seem to take the forefront of what our homeless population really is, but it isn't. It's our families. It's that 220 families that the school district has already identified in just the two months that school's been in session. It's the overall wideness of the issue, the poverty, the complexity of the issues that make ending homelessness such a challenge for us. And so, with that, there's just, it'll be on the county's website. It's on our Housing for the Homeless website from a state perspective. So, if you're looking for information, I also, you can email me, and I'll be happy to send it out. But we are really just inviting the community to take on this challenge, pick six things, take it, put it on your Facebook page, put it on social media. Facing Hunger and Homelessness hashtag is what we're saying. So, well, that's all really. It's just a wonderful opportunity, I think, to bring awareness to issues we don't often think about.
Well, thank you. Thanks for coming this morning.
Sure.
Thanks for all the work that the homeless advisory board has done to bring attention to what is a difficult, very difficult issue. So, thank you. With that, I entertain a motion to issue the proclamation.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to read, she didn't read the last paragraph, and I understand why, but the last paragraph says, "We, now therefore we," the Minnehaha County Commissioner Commission, "do hereby proclaim November 2017 as Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month in Minnehaha County, and we encourage all members to recognize the continued need for services for the homeless in the hungry in Sioux Falls area and to support those organizations working to meet those needs." And with that, I would make a motion to approve this proclamation.
And second with a comment?
Okay. Commissioner Karski?
Stacy, thank you to you and to your board also. I'm probably one of the least-qualified individuals to talk about homelessness and mental health, but I've sure learned a lot in the last 10 months, to be sure. You know, when you look at the 273 homeless individuals in the mentally, severely mentally ill, you know, the PTSD, the bipolar, the schizophrenia, you know, these are all people that are on our streets. And one thing I have learned is, you know, we can help these people. And mental illness is a disease or an illness that's as treatable as diabetes. The success rate is good or better than treating diabetes. So, it's not that, you know, these people are, you know, going to fall through the cracks and they have to be, have this problem for their entire lives that we can't help them because we can help them. So, I thank you for the work that you do in making sure that this happens. I spent a night, one whole night, being, you know, in a cardboard box at the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House. And, you know, not everybody has the opportunity to sleep in a cardboard box to, you know, to come to that awareness of that. But they do have a program before that, and it's a very well-done program that the Bishop Dudley House does with their board. And I'd encourage anybody in the public that wants to see it because that is available for the public to attend that part of that program and learn more about the homeless in our community. So, thanks again for what you do.
Sure. Thank you for sleeping out.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming. That takes us to item 13, and we have a presentation this morning by Kent Woodmancy regarding the food, excuse me, feedlot permit program. Thanks for coming this morning.
Good morning. My name's Kent Woodmancy. I'm the administrator of the feedlot permit program in the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. Next slide. That's This is an organizational chart for the department. Secretary Perner is on Governor Dugard's cabinet, and he's organized the department into two divisions. We're in the Division of Environmental Services, which has all the regulatory programs within the department. The feedlot permit program has 11 people in it. 11 or 10 of those people work with feedlots. Nine of those people are in Pier, and one are in Watertown. The department does have a Sioux Falls regional office, and we do have staff in Sioux Falls that we have used occasionally when we needed to. Next slide. The US EPA does not require concentrated animal feeding operations to obtain a permit unless they discharge. In South Dakota, the legislature passed a law in 2007 in anticipation of this change in the federal requirements that does require concentrated animal feeding operations to have a water pollution control permit. And without a permit, the concerns were there was no roadmap for environmental compliance. Producers didn't know what they needed to do to comply without the permit. producers didn't know what they needed to do to comply without the permit, and that local hearings for conditionally used permits would be more controversial. After a two-and-a-half-day contested case hearing at the end of last year, our general permit was reissued earlier this year. The next slide kind of talks about some differences between county zoning and the department's permit. We get a lot of questions about those things, and they kind of work together hand-in-hand. The legislature's given local governments the authority to regulate land use planning, like setbacks to homes and churches, roads, odors, things like that, and the department has the authority to control water pollution. Generally, new operations go through the county zoning process before they go through the department's process, but unless there's something in the zoning ordinance that prohibits it, there's nothing that would prohibit them from going through our process first or at the same time. This map shows the 430 currently permitted operations in South Dakota. There are actually eight operations that are outside of South Dakota that bring manure into our state, and they have to meet the same requirements for the land application of manure in our state as a facility located in the state. But you can see that most of the facilities are in the eastern part of the state where feed is grown, and that's what we would expect. Next slide. Here is a list of the operations in Minnehaha County. Next slide. The main part of my presentation is gonna talk, was to talk about oversight. My understanding was you had some questions on the department's oversight of concentrated animal feeding operations when you recently adopted some zoning changes. So, I wanted to talk about our oversight, and that starts with our inspection program. There's several kinds of inspections that we do. We do at least one construction inspection at new operations that are in construction or operations that are modifying their operation in some way where there's construction ongoing. Our inspection reports include any deviations from approved plans and specifications, and those need to be addressed by the design engineer before they get permit coverage for the system or that component. We have once withdrawn our approval of a facility during construction when we went out and found they were building something completely different than what we approved, and that stopped construction at that site. The next kind of inspection I want to talk about is compliance inspections. These are at facilities once they're permitted and operating, and the EPA requires that CAFOs be inspected at least once every five years. We have state rules that require that operations be inspected annually or once every three years, depending upon the maximum number of animals that they raise, so our requirements are more stringent than the recommendation of EPA. During those inspections, we review all the records required to be kept for the facility. Generally, that's the nutrient management planning records, which is basically their calculations to show their application rate of manure and their inspection requirements that they're required to do during that land application and at other times of the year. And then we're looking at the manure containment system to make sure that it's properly operated and maintained. Our inspection reports are carbon copy forms, so when we're done with the inspection, our inspector signs it, and the producer signs it, and they get a copy, a carbon copy of the inspection report right there on site. EPA staff have conducted joint or oversight inspections in the past on us, and they've given us positive feedback on those inspections. The next kind of inspection is closer inspections. We don't get these very often, this is when a facility would close. I would say, some years we have one facility, in some years we don't have any, if you looked at the last couple of years. But basically, it's required before we can terminate permit coverage at an existing facility, and it requires us to look at the facility to make sure that all the manure and any wastewater is properly land-applied before the permit is terminated. Complaint inspections, we get a lot of questions on this, we have information on our website, but we still get lots of questions. State law requires that we have a complaint form, or we need a complaint from a government official acting in their official capacity. The complaint form is on our website, and it's not just for feedlot activities, there's other activities that the department does where we need that complaint form. We do get complaints from government officials acting in their official capacity, and we do get complaints from the public using the complaint form. Common complaints that we get are our water pollution complaints at both concentrated animal feeding operations and smaller animal feeding operations. We get complaints that operations are of a size where they need a permit, or that an operation is not following their permit. Those are common complaints that we get. Common violations that we find during compliance inspections and other inspections is not following the nutrient management plan, so not taking soil and manure tests and calculating an application rate before land-applying manure or applying on fields not in an operations-approved nutrient management plan, not conducting required inspections or keeping required records, constructing or populating parts of a manure management system without approval, operating without permit coverage, or small manure discharges that have resulted in little or no damage. This time of year, we have a lot of manure application occurring here in the fall, and it's not uncommon to have a application house have a tear or a leak of some kind. Oftentimes, that is contained right out in the application field, sometimes it does reach a road ditch. Most times, those road ditches are dry and the manure doesn't go anywhere. The facility is required to report any discharge within 24 hours. Inspection follow-up, violations found during inspections can be followed up with warning letters, administrative enforcement actions, which may or may not include penalties. The Argus Leader had a article last month or the month before on enforcement, and they had a list on their website, a copy of that article, that had a list of all recent enforcement actions. A list is available from the department upon request, it's changing all the time, and we very rarely get such a request. I looked at the list from 2015 to present, there have been 19 actions so far. Those actions cover those kind of things that I just went through in the violation list of common violations. Those are the things that we're taking those actions for. Generally, when they get bumped up to an administrative action, it's because we've tried to work with the facility and they're unwilling to comply, and so we take an administrative enforcement action. The other option we have is referring the matter to the Office of Attorney General for resolution, and we do that for a variety of reasons. Sometimes the facility has an attorney already, and we know that, and it's easier for the attorneys to work together that way to resolve the issue. Sometimes, we know the facility is not going to be willing to settle an administrative action, and so we refer to the AG's office to start out over there. As I said, some of our actions do include penalties, and penalties are calculated using a penalty policy that was part of our NPDS delegation package, which is the permit program that we issue these permits under. The same policy is used by other DENR programs, and penalties are calculated based on the magnitude of the violation or its effect, environmental damage, willfulness, violation history, cooperation, mitigating factors, and economic advantage for noncompliance. Penalties collected are placed in the livestock cleanup fund, that's a fund that's been created by the legislature that would allow, that's available if we would need to come in and take an action at a site to prevent a discharge or something like that. And that fund has been used very infrequently in the past, but that is available to us. The EPA has reviewed our penalty calculations yearly for the last several years, they've asked the department to submit all of our penalty calculations at the end of each year. We haven't gotten any comments back on those. They also do inspection, permit, and enforcement file reviews as part of their oversight of our delegated program. And so, there is some oversight of the program. That's the information I had to provide for you. If you have any questions, I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Kent? Commissioner Bart?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and honestly, I just want to say, well, I probably have some questions too, but that I invited Kent to come and address us to show that there is, in fact, enforcement on these issues. When we, in planning and zoning, have applications, it's not as dry and quiet in the room as when Kent is speaking. It's often very contentious, and allegations are made, and anecdotal comments are made, people will have pictures of something they consider to be a violation, and I think that the public needs to know that there is a process, there is an organization that does enforce these rules, and that every situation isn't the end of the world as you see it. It may, in fact, just be a moment in time where something was, a puddle of poo was placed someplace and now it's gone. I mean, we take it very seriously in planning with Scott's department, and I know the state takes it seriously, and I know most, all the producers I know take it very seriously, and the public needs to be confident that the frightening information that they're being given isn't entirely the full story. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Karski?
A few, and comment, question, I guess. You know, the word CAFO has basically been, becomes synonymous with the less savory four-letter words around that we hear. And truly, a CAFO is not a bad thing. I mean, it, to me, when I look at what a CAFO is, it's combining best practices for production egg and proven science to manage the output, if you will, of these animals. And I think people really need to take a look at, you know, what is the best practice and how a CAFO really leads to that or comes to that end. You know, you talk about how the state legislature has allowed for local control for zoning and that type of thing, and I think it needs to stay that way. I've heard talk around from other parts of the state that they'd really like to see the state impose rules that paint the whole state the same way for when it comes to zoning and CAFOs, and I think that's wrong. I think local control needs to stay here. We need to manage things here in Minnehaha County different than Campbell County, and I think that's the appropriate way to do it. What I'm curious about, or if you could answer a question for me, is... Let some of our air traffic go over so you can hear me better. A CAFO becomes a CAFO when it, basically when it's, you have to work with, how is it said here, when you're discharging, the animal waste discharge. Because if you're out in the middle of nowhere, western South Dakota, and you have 400 head of cattle on 1,200 acres, you're not a CAFO, correct?
Right, really, what the definition of CAFO is, is it differentiates between pasture cattle and, or animals on pasture and animals that are confined and fed, maintained in a specific area.
And how many animals?
It depends on the animal.
The type of animal.
So, for beef cattle, it's 1,000, for a charioteer cattle, it's 700. There's a table that lists out the different kinds. A lot of counties use animal units, and I can't remember if Minnehaha County uses animal units or not. We used to use animal units, and the federal government changed their definition in 2003 to large, medium, and small concentrated animal feeding operations, and that large is a ta... We just have a table that has animal numbers, so the 1,000 beef cattle, 700 dairy cattle.
So, I'm driving down a county road somewhere, and I see, you know, 150 cows out pastured in a field, that's not a CAFO, but I drive by it, and there's a yard, and it's got 150 cattle in it, beef cattle, that are being raised, and they're feeding them, that's a CAFO.
It could be, they have to, there's certain criteria that they have to meet in the definition, they have to be there for a certain amount of time, they have to be there for 45 days in a 12-month period, and there can't be vegetation present during the growing season. It's not just, it is a little bit of a complicated definition.
So, but I remember my father-in-law had about 100 head of cattle, and they were, for the most part, pastured, but during calving season, for those 30 or 45 days, he'd bring them back, and, you know, they were in the yard, basically, during calving season to take care of the calves, that's what that's about.
Yeah, and the whole purpose is to prevent the discharge of manure from these operations, that's what the permit is basically requiring, that they contain the manure, and they land apply it for its fertilizer value. So, they're seeing some benefit for that, and they're not having to buy commercial fertilizer, and some of these facilities are getting paid for the fertilizer value from their neighbors who want the manure.
Okay, thank you, Kent.
Other questions, comments? Uh-uh. If not, it's, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for inviting me.
Yeah, it's always good to...
Madam Chair, you know, Scott Anderson is here, and I see at least one other producer person, I wonder if they might want to make a comment? I didn't ask them in advance, I'm just suggesting that they...
Never wanted to turn down an invitation.
That's as shy as I am.
Scott Anderson, County Planning. I found Kent's presentation very, very good and informative, and I think with the public, part of what we also need to understand is, I looked at this from a code enforcement aspect, and I think what's important for all of us in the community, the commission, Planning Commission, to understand that based on the kind of complaints that we get, that someone turning a corner and having a little bit of manure surfacing when they're injecting it, while it might emit an odor, doesn't necessarily rise to the level of a complaint or an offense. And that's something that we deal with in my office, as Kent said, this is the time of year where we're, people are applying liquid manure or solid manure into fields because the crops are out, it's not frozen yet, so it is the time, and we get complaints. And sometimes, they aren't necessarily complaints that rise to the level of a violation or an offense. So, I think that's something that we also need to remember and think of, is that it's just normal business practice or the application process that, you know, as these machines are starting and stopping, there may be a little bit extra right at the edge of the field, and then we have people saying, "Oh, my gosh, you know, there's manure there," and it just is the way it is, so...
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just to comment, if we had 1,000 cows out on a field grazing year-round, which you couldn't support, there would be manure everywhere and it wouldn't be disc'd in. And so, the fact that we have CAFOs and we are managing the waste is a lot better than having 1,000 cows out in a cornfield, or 1,000 cows in a grass field, trying to survive and making a bigger money.
Exactly, it's, as Commissioner Karski said, it's that science of the best practice, and it's the method of, the best way to raise this and have the least amount... it's, it's the method of the best way to raise this and have the least amount of impact on the environment. And I also, you know, you sort of, it's a situation where we all like sausage, but we don't necessarily want to know how it's made. And so, you know, we all want to go to McDonald's or wherever and get, have a hamburger, but we don't sometimes realize that there is an impact from that. I mean, there is a cost to doing business. If you want to have a hamburger, I mean, you need to realize that's, that's being produced somewhere. So, thanks.
Chair, I just would comment, I know for a fact that Scott's office responds when complaints come in, as do I sometimes. So the public should certainly report issues, but we are not ignoring them.
No, we, just to follow up on that, every time we get a complaint, it, it requires, or I send someone out, or I go out myself and, and actually do a follow-up to see really what, if there really is a violation. Because we, we don't want violations. I mean, we do want to protect the environment, and, and we're, it's the balancing act that we go through every day with planning and zoning of balancing the uses that are out there with the property owner's rights and trying to make everyone be happy together. And so we do go out, inspect every single complaint that we get to see if it's a valid issue, so.
All right. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 14. Oh, excuse me. Yes, okay. One more.
One comment. Doug Odie, the farm address is 48170-2666th Street, Brandon. I just, Kent did a wonderful job of presenting what he had. I just have two, or I think it's about two little questions, they aren't major at all. But as far as sampling the manure, especially if you have a lagoon or a pit, is, I wish you would specify when the best time it would be to sample that, whether it be agitated, I know that, but it always gets thicker towards the end. So should a person sample it in the beginning of it, the middle of emptying it, or at the very end where it's more concentrated? I'd just like a little bit more clear cut on that, so you get an actual, the precise amount of what the nutrient value is of that manure. And then, yeah, being in this county, there's always, we just talked about a small discharge. What is the definition of a small discharge? That's a very gray area. To one person, that's not a spill at all, to somebody driving by, it's, it's a major, major spill. So, just like that, cleared up a little bit. And as far as violations, how do they break them down as far as penalty? You know, it's, if it's a major spill, how's it penalized? You know, you know, in the future, we would like to have a drag line, you know, so we wouldn't have to be hauling out on the road, just have a drag line. But I just fear what the general public, what they'd think if they saw a hose going under a culvert across the road into another person's property injecting manure. So there's just a lot of little things that I'd like to have a little clearer definition on, how the DNR would handle that, or how they'd see that. And, yeah, and the biggest thing is educating the general public on, you know, this is, this is science, it works, you know, it's safer. It's much safer to drag a hose back and forth across field than having tanks out there on roads, highways, intersections, you know. So I just wish we could all get a clear picture, and inform the general public is a big thing. So, thank you.
So Kent, I don't know if you have an opportunity to comment on those?
Yep, I sure can try to answer those questions. We used to have a lab at SDSU that was really good with helping us with questions like when to, when's the best time to collect a manure, a manure sample? And that lab really isn't there so much anymore. It's hard to get those kind of answers. But I'd say, you know, work with your lab, make sure that you have your, your system agitated before you take a sample, because if you don't, then you are going to see some changes in concentrations as you empty the system out. So, the other question was, what's a large discharge versus a small discharge? The permit, our permit doesn't address that in any way. Any discharge is a discharge. So, like I said, even if you have a hose break that the manure is completely contained out in the field, it doesn't go anywhere, you still need to report that. Where it becomes a issue where, where it's more serious is obviously when it reaches waters of the state, which would be a river or a stream or a lake or things like that. Where it could impact fish or people, that, that would be a higher concern to us. I kind of went through in that one slide, we do have a penalty policy that we follow when we take an enforcement action. We use that to calculate a penalty for something, whether it's just a record-keeping violation or something that causes environmental damage. That guides us in, in calculating what the penalty, appropriate penalty should be by following that policy. So, so that's what we, we use. When we do take an action, we include any other violations that we found at the facility in, in the current permit cycle. We do have a two-year statute of limitation, so when we calculate a penalty, we include any violations in the last two years in that penalty calculation. And usually, it's a combination of things. There could be record-keeping violations and other violations all put together, and oftentimes that leads us to calculate a penalty for different types of violations found. So, did I answer your questions? Okay. Did that lead to any more questions from anybody on the commission?
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment to what you said, Mr. Odie, about education, because when you do start running hoses, and I have several producers in my area that run hoses, and I think it's a great idea, because I've heard of complaints where, when the hose goes into the ditch and into the culvert, they're dumping manure in the culvert, which isn't true, and it's an education of our public that that's the best way to do it, and they're not dumping it in the river.
If you're putting it in a Department of Transportation road ditch, you need a right-of-way permit from them, and I'm not sure if Minnehaw County has the same requirement. I know Brookings County has that requirement. We do have some facilities that have basically put in their own pipeline underneath road crossings like that, and then they have connections on each end. One of the reasons that they could do that is, they need to inspect those, those hoses in the ditch to make sure that they're not leaking under the permit. And if they don't have them in the right place, they could be sitting in water, and then you could not do that. And so that's, that's common in some places around culverts. And so to get around that, some of those facilities have gotten a permanent easement and put a permanent pipeline underneath, underneath roads, so.
Madam Chair, our highway superintendent nodded at one point there, and maybe we should have him come and address the group.
Camera?
That's right.
Morning, Commissioners, Highway Superintendent DJ Boothy. Yes, if anybody installs anything like this, whether it's temporary or permanent, we do have a private utility right-of-way permit that we would require the applicant to obtain, and that goes for inspection or just making sure that the installation is, is not going to cause any future problems with their right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. A lot of good information here this morning, so I appreciate everyone coming out this morning. Are there any other questions or comments? We will move on to item 14, and DJ Boothy gets to come back. We're going to consider a motion to authorize the highway department to purchase two SS dump bodies and hydraulic systems through a national joint powers alliance contract.
Commissioners, I want to clarify one thing. The dump bodies, that's a term that I don't really want to use for this. We originally purchased two chassis and two dump bodies. When we say dump bodies, we consider that the dumping portion of the dump truck or the snowplow truck, that you would see the big box lifting up and dumping. Inside of the dump box or the dump body, we put a salt spreader unit and, and also some plastic tanks to hold some salt brine for winter operations, and that's what this purchase is for. This is for two stainless steel salt spreaders and the hydraulic systems that run the salt spreading units. And so this is off the purchase of the National Joint Powers Agreement, NGP or NJPA contract, and it's for two different units, each of them $19,948, for totaling just under $40,000. And look for your approval on that.
Are there any questions with DJ? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment, that it does say that in the narrative, that this is to finish out those, and that they are stainless steel sander bodies, salt puffers, and hydraulic systems.
Move to approve?
Is there a second? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I think all of your, your items here this morning, except for the last one, is just to remind us that winter is coming. You have no choice. So it's item 15. This is to purchase two snowplows, plow hitches, snow wings, and ice scraper.
Commissioners, again, this is, this is kind of the last piece of the puzzle for the complete snowplow trucks that we ordered dating back to July, I think, of, of this year. This is for the actual plow units themselves and the attachments to those plow units. This is a grand total for both trucks totaling $48,536 from J-Craft. J-Craft has a contract through the state of Minnesota that we're purchasing off of for, for this particular purchase. So look for your approval on this one as well.
Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So that takes us to item 16, and this is a motion, to consider a motion to approve a resolution to set a speed limit of 35 miles an hour on Highway 130 east of South Dakota 115 for a quarter of a mile. DJ Boothy?
Commissioners, there's a map pulled up here on the computer, on the printing, or on the screen. This is on the west side there, that's Runner Corner, and then County Highway 130, it runs east-west right there. This quarter-mile from State Highway 115 at the Runner Corner, for a quarter-mile running east is the section that we're talking about right here. In preparation for this item, our staff did a, a traffic study, and as part of the traffic study, they put radar units and traffic data collection devices out in two separate locations, one of them being right at the east end of this, where that red line ends, and then the second one, I think, was about 500 feet to the east of there, which would have been about 1,800 or 1,900 feet east of the intersection. And some interesting data came out of, of those two speed studies. There's about 2,000 cars per day that travel on this road. The, the westernmost, or the, the radar unit set up on the west side of that, which is the east end of this proposed speed limit area, the 85th percentile speed was 51 miles per hour. It had a max, we had a 48-hour period of, of data that we collected. During the 48 hours, the maximum speed at that location was 68 miles per hour. However, on the east side of this study area, about 500 feet east of this area, in that same 48-hour period, we had 14 instances where the speeds exceeded 75 miles per hour. The maximum speed that was recorded was 91 miles per hour. This is a 55 mile per hour speed limit. Just over a quarter-mile east of a very busy intersection, right along several house frontages, there's a couple of different bus stops right there. So we have a very serious problem right here. Typically, when we set speed limits, it's definitely not intended to control the speeds. That's a law enforcement issue, and we work closely with our law enforcement agencies to ensure that the speed limits are controlled. In this particular case, we are using some engineering judgment and just some common-sense judgment that we've got, I think, two different bus stop locations in, within this quarter-mile. I think there's eight access points within this quarter-mile servicing several different houses. And so 55 miles per hour is, is too high of a speed limit. With the 85th percentile speed of 51 miles per hour, a, a normal speed limit would probably be 45 in that particular case. But looking at, at having a 35 mile per hour speed limit west of the intersection, and then with the school stops, or the bus stops, and the number of houses right there, we felt comfortable using our judgment, saying that the speed limit should be 35. But we are going to have to work very closely with Sheriff's Office and law enforcement to make sure that this is enforced. We've already had conversations with them. We're going to be putting out some, some radar electronic message boards that report the speed up to a certain maximum speed, and also reports what your traffic fine would be if you were to be pulled over going that rate of speed. So we're looking at some creative ways just to try to hopefully educate the public that the speed limit has changed, and also what the fines would be should they continue to drive up to 91 miles per hour in that particular location. So that all being said, there is a resolution included in with the packet that changes the speed limit from 55 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour for, for one quarter of a mile from the Runner Corner intersection going east, and it's essentially a continuation of the 35 mile per hour speed limit that is west of the intersection coming out of Runner. So that being said, I can answer any questions about the resolution, or I'd ask for your approval of the resolution, and then I also have a comment to piggyback on, on Commissioner Bender's comment about winter weather coming up as well.
Mr. Heiburger?
I'm wondering how long, obviously, this is a change for the people in that area, and so how long will there be extra notification that the speed limit has changed in that area, so you don't have somebody that's not aware of it?
We're looking at at least two weeks. And, and there has been message boards out there already for, I think, one week, and not, not about a speed limit change, but about speeds in general. As soon as we found, found out from our speed study data what the speeds actually were out there, we put some message boards out as soon as they were available.
Other questions? Commissioner Bart?
I just am shocked to read about passing school buses and stuff. I mean, don't they take pictures or get license plates on that stuff? And that's one of the reasons I object to paper license plates that people put behind their tinted windows. But potentially, I could ride shotgun if you'd loan me one. It's, I'm, that's outrageous that people would be passing school buses with red lights on and not, not pay penalties. Must be stopped.
Any other questions? I don't disagree. DJ, you said you had any follow-up comment?
So, follow-up comment? Actually, tonight, late tonight, and then into the morning, we're expecting our first snow event that is going to have actually some accumulation on the roadway, also some frost. We'll have frost overnight, and so the commute to work tomorrow morning is, is going to be the first exciting one for some people. And so we're, we're putting out a news release this morning. I think the news release already went out. It's just some general, good driving tips for, for winter driving. We're hoping that Argus Leader is here, and hears this, and so maybe the, put out a news flash or share the story on Facebook or social media, and then also hoping up, Callaland or somebody like that will hopefully print something. And this public awareness, I hope, will help people reduce their speeds out there, but if somebody's going to be driving 90 miles an hour on frosted roads tomorrow morning, there's definitely going to be some serious accidents.
Thank you. Commissioner Karski?
Thanks for that message, DJ, and just kind of follow up. It is Halloween, so tonight, I think it'd be a good idea for everybody to slow down a little bit, so, thank you.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I'd make a motion on item number 16, which is to approve a resolution to set the speed limit at 35.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item 17, Warden Gromer, brief on the funding and purchase of an x-ray body scanner, which sounds like a Halloween item.
Good morning, Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. This is just information. Um, this is just informational to let you know that we, um, did pre, earlier in the year, request some funding assistance from the state for the purchase of a body scanner. That was granted, I, the numbers are included in the memo that I sent. The state was able to provide us seventy-five thousand dollars to apply toward the overall two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar purchase price of the equipment. So, this equipment hopefully will go a long ways to helping us control some of the contraband coming into the jail.
Any questions for Warden Gromer? Commissioner Heiburger?
Wait, do you use it routinely, or do you just reuse it when it's suspected?
We haven't ordered it yet.
Okay, but, but would you, I mean, does the jail?
It will be used very routinely, uh, on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I think that's a better way of checking than alternative methods, so.
Yeah, I know that's been a, it's been a struggle for your, uh, for your group, so.
Struggle, and this'll be a very valuable tool in continuing to monitor that.
Well, we very much appreciate the funding sources.
Yep.
So, thank you for coming and briefing us on that. Okay, working our way through the agenda here. So, the next item is item eighteen, consider a motion to authorize the Sheriff's Office to purchase a two thousand and eighteen Dodge Grand Caravan, also at no cost to the county. We like these motions.
Good morning Commissioners, Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. Um, along with the same funding that we received for the body scanner from the state of South Dakota, the Drug Control Fund, uh, they have awarded us, uh, it was seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars towards the purchase of a warrant task force vehicle. Um, that is something that we have requested and identified as a need based on the aging, uh, vehicle of a two thousand and four Dodge Durango with a hundred and forty thousand miles that we are looking to replace it with. Um, so, we've got the money from the state, we're going to use some of our federal asset forfeiture funds to offset the remaining balance, to bring us up to a total of twenty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars for a two thousand and eighteen Dodge Caravan off the state bid.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve, I do have a question.
Second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
What are we going to do with the old vehicle?
Uh, the old vehicle will be used until ready for surplus, which then is offered up through the process of other departments who are able to grab onto it.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, this takes us to item nineteen, it's kind of goes along with our, uh, motion earlier regarding the sale of the bonds for the jail expansion. We've got, um, now to consider a motion to authorize the chairperson to sign the, um, contract with the architect for the jail expansion. Craig?
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Assistant Commission Administrative Officer, uh, filling in for Carol Muller, who is out of the office today. Uh, before you is the contract to sign, uh, for design services for the jail expansion project. And, uh, just to give you a little bit of background about how we got here, uh, to this point today, uh, in terms of putting together the contract and the interviews and so forth, a leadership team has been assembled comprised of Commissioner Bender, Commissioner Barth, Warden Gromer, Facilities Director Mark Crins, Auditor Bob Litz, Finance Director Kim Adamson, and Carol, Carol Muller, the Commission Administrative Officer. And, uh, this process has been going on for the better part of, uh, a year, uh, and in that process, Dick Strasberg was retained from Tegra as the owner's representative, and I'd like to acknowledge him here in the office. He can, uh, go into, uh, details here in a moment about the specifics of the contract. Uh, in addition to this leadership team, uh, external counsel was retained from Woods Fuller, uh, Jim Widerich, uh, has experience with, uh, AIA documents, which this contract is also one, and, uh, Dick will be able to describe, uh, the process that he helped coordinate with developing the RFP, coordinating the interview process, and then, uh, reviewing, uh, and negotiating this contract.
Thank you. Welcome, Dick.
Good morning, Dick Strasberg with Tegra. So, we started this process by, um, publishing a request for qualifications that, that went out, uh, and it was a, is open to the public. We received fourteen, uh, submittals, and, uh, within that, uh, each firm was, uh, that submitted was asked to identify their experience with similar facilities, and, um, uh, who the team is that would be, uh, you know, proposed on it. And, uh, our goal was to narrow this down to three or four firms that would be shortlisted, which we did. Uh, the, the big distinguisher on this project compared to some is having specific experience that is similar to the project that we're doing. One, this is an expansion, which makes it, has some challenges to tie into the existing, existing systems of the existing jail. And, uh, two, within the jail, uh, and, um, criminal justice products that are available, there's been a lot of advancements that have been made. There's, there's, uh, prefab options for cells, for example, and, uh, things that, we need people that, uh, on the architectural side that are very familiar with the trends and familiar with the, with, uh, security systems and things that are going into these more modernized facilities. So, we put it together, a request for proposal, and, uh, that went out to the shortlisted firms, and, uh, that got real specific on it. So, we, we, uh, started outlining the business terms that they would have within the contract, and we specifically requested who would be the team leads on that, because on a project like this, it's very important. Uh, so, uh, the selection committee, uh, went through, uh, received their proposals, went through the interviews, and, uh, concluded that, uh, a, a firm, J.L.G., uh, is a, a regional firm, uh, based in North Dakota, they have an office here in Sioux Falls. They combined with BWBR, which is a St. Paul, uh, based firm, and, uh, to, to form a team that would, uh, to do this project. And, uh, so we, I think we started out with a real strong team, uh, really very well-qualified. We actually have the individual that, that was involved with, uh, original jail project as the lead on this expansion project. Uh, so, we then began the process of negotiating a contract. As I mentioned, many of the terms are outlined in the RFP, so it's really an expansion of, extension of that. And it gets into the fine points, uh, much of, uh, the what-if scenarios if things don't go as planned. We worked closely with Jim Widerich to, uh, put together a, a contract and negotiate that, and as typical, it goes back and forth quite a few times between, uh, the, the county side and, uh, the legal team, uh, that represents the architectural firms and their consultants. But I think we're happy to say here that we've got it, we've got a good contract, and I, I recommend approval on it. It's been well-vetted. It's, um, as you'll see on the copies you've got, anything that's underlined is something that's changed, uh, from what the original AIA document was, and you can see that it started out to be probably a twenty-page document, ended up to be about thirty pages. Uh, but it's a very, it's, 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 I think it's a, it's a good document. I think we're happy with the end result, and we recommend approval of that.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dick? I know we've all had an opportunity to, to meet with you kind of individually, and you've had an opportunity to work with, um, Jim Widerich, and he's also recommended approval of, of the contract. So, if there aren't any questions for Dick, I guess I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Much like our earlier motion, it's a very short motion that represents hours and hours and hours of work, and we really appreciate, uh, your help, Dick, in, in working through this process, so. Okay, that takes us to, um, twenty liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today? Commissioner Heiburger?
I just have one. Yesterday, Jeff and I met with, um, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, Executive Director, sent out, uh, messages last week and asked if we would consider meetings, um, with, uh, law firm from Wisconsin, and also the Executive Director of the State Association of Commissioners from Wisconsin. They are moving forward with, um, a lawsuit against, um, the pharmaceutical companies regarding opioid epidemic. Um, most of Wisconsin has signed on to this lawsuit, and they are out gathering other states, working through different associations. And so, we met yesterday basically just for a learning, um, listen and learn to what they had and what they had to offer. Um, like I said, Jeff and I were there, we also had one of the deputy state's attorneys with us, um, Donna Kelly, listening to, and that's really what it was. I did, um, secured an extra packet that I have given to the commission office, and we will just be looking through what they were doing and, um, see if it's something that we're interested in or not. So, it was very interesting.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth?
Just to follow up Cindy's good report there, uh, obviously, tens of thousands of people have died nationally, uh, from this, uh, this epidemic, and, uh, there are some legal grounds to, uh, contend with the producers of the product, uh, that might make them have to kick back something to the public. Um, I don't know, it's, uh, it's a darn serious thing, and I think we are obsessed with our own meth issues and stuff here, but, uh, I'm certain that we've got issues with opioids and heroin also. Uh, just anecdotally, I know of some. I don't know that we've, uh, gotten a report of, you know, how many people have died. Uh, I, I know the warden is here, he might, uh, know how often you get people that are on opioids that then wind up going through withdrawal, uh, but it's, it's got to be a tough thing in, uh, for him to contend with in our jail.
Commissioner Karski?
I have nothing on drugs, that's Jeff's department, so. No, I, liaison report, so, sorry, Jeff.
More, more like IPAs, okay?
Um, as liaison to the Highway Department, I know DJ has somebody I think he'd like to introduce to us today, so, okay, DJ?
Thank you, Commissioner. Today I brought Perry Anderson, he's our new lead mechanic in the department, started on Monday, and so, uh, he's, he's, Monday of last week, uh, he's, uh, gaining a lot of information the last week or so, and not overwhelmed yet, but, uh, he's really enjoying the first week so far, and, and we're looking forward to having him on, on staff for a long time.
And from what I understand, a transplant from Rapid City, so, welcome to the eastern side of the state, so.
Yeah, and if, and if it's okay, if we've got thirty minutes or so, he brought a PowerPoint that he'd like to present. Maybe that's next week.
Well, welcome. Thank you very much for coming this morning. Anything else?
Not on liaison.
Okay, no other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Any old business? Commissioner Karski?
Let me put it under new or old. Um, I decided this year to participate in, as you probably noticed, No Shave November. I, I got a head start on it, so, um, I am raising, um, yeah, donating money, and if anybody wants to join me in that. No Shave November is about, um, men's health, you know, prostate, testicular, cancer, and mental health issues, and eighty percent of the money raised, um, does go directly to those, um, organizations. So, I decided this year that I would endure the, um, the itching and scratching and, um, get through the month of November, and, you know, it's, it's about hair, because as most of you are aware, when you treat for cancer, you do lose your hair, so it's just a way of showing support for those people that have to do that type of thing. Sorry, warden.
I'm going to leave that alone. Does anybody else have any questions?
My beard predates, uh, the Nov- this November, but I would encourage any of my friends that want to donate to give it to Dean.
Appreciate it, though, I'll, I'll, through a donation, yes. There is a website, No Shave November, and I am registered on it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Old business, new business?
Move, uh, to, we adjourn into executive session for contracts.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming, everyone.